Okay, ChatGPT, let's write some lyrics. This is gonna be awful. Mediocre is the bar, so can we do it? Alright, I think my, I'm gonna dump the entire script in there and say, uh, let's take this song by song and, and so, you know, here's the whole script, but would you suggest a song for, you know, the, the, the first, you know, couple of pages? I don't think it's gonna allow all that text, but let's give it a shot. I'm writing a musical. Would you help me write some lyrics if I give you some dialogue? The answer's gonna be sure! Of course! What's the dialogue you have in mind? Here's the whole show. It's about fifteen minutes. Long, and I think it will have three or four songs. Let's start by looking at the opening couple of pages. Do you have any instincts about where a song might replace some of the dialogue? In the first several pages. Okay. Here's the whole show. Oh, took it all. Given the dynamics... Look at that, here's, be very quick. Given the dynamics in the opening scene, a song could be an effective way to heighten the tension emotions, particularly around Jamie's big moment and the chaos surrounding it. Potential song idea. Tonight is the canvas. Jamie alone. Ahhh, there's three people and somebody bursting on the door, but alone, yeah. See, you know, it's because the, the, there's such a trope in modern musical theater that a song needs to be clear the stage, one person sings, and even artificial intelligence has got... Anyway, Jamie alone, addressing their reflection in the mirror. Tonight is the canvas and I am the paint. No, well, Jamie's painting their own skin. But anyway, tonight's the canvas and I'm the paint, a masterpiece in motion. Or so they say. Brush strokes of ambition, splattered with my pain. Every drops of, every drop of doubts, a hue that's not going away. Okay, Jamie, as they prepare and the chaos unfolds around them. What do you mean by that? Well, Taylor bursts in and says, "We gotta pull the Palestine piece", while Jamie is singing, "Tonight's, my art's a battleground, where dreams and fears collide in a gallery of broken hearts. In the gallery of broken hearts, where truth and beauty hide. So I'll stand tall in the spotlight, through the storm and the strife. Tonight, I'll paint the world anew in the colors of my life." Then Alex and Sam, in the background, arguing and reflecting on Jamie's struggle. Okay. In every piece of art, there's a story told. Through pain and triumph, in shades both bright and cold. I hate that cold shade, it's so bad from the... Sculptures of resilience, installation to... Each fragment of our heartache plays a crucial role. Please don't write lyrics like that! Chorus, Jamie, rising to the challenge, facing the chaos with renewed determination, even though the chaos is in the background, apparently simultaneous. Tonight, my art's a battleground, where dreams and fears collide in the gallery of broken hearts, where truth and beauty hide. So I'll stand tall in the spotlight, through the storm and the strife. Tonight, I'll paint the world anew in the colors of my life. Bridge, now with conviction and resolve to the others, apparently are now silent. You see, art is more than just a show, it's where we find our strength and grow, it's where we find our grow. So let our protests roar and the arguments blaze. I'll find my voice in this chaotic maze. Final chorus. Jamie, Alex, and Sam united in their resolve as the scene reaches its climax. The climax is tossing the phone in the toilet, but okay. Tonight, my art's a battleground, where dreams and fears collide in the gallery of broken hearts, where truth and beauty hide. So I'll stand tall in the spotlight, through the storm and the strife. Tonight, I'll paint my world, the world anew in the colors of my life. Outro, addressing the audience directly. Which doesn't happen in the script, but apparently it happens so often in musical theater that you can just now speak to the audience. Maybe they sing along. In the end, it's the art that changes the world, not the chaos or the noise, but the stories we unfurl. So here's to the pain, the glory, the fight. Tonight, we make our mark in the shimmering light. Why did you think that was a good lyric? AI, this song would fit well as a reflection of Jamie's emotional state and the significance of our art, contrasting with the chaos surrounding the exhibition. It emphasizes the personal and public stakes of the night and could serve as a powerful opening number or pivotal moment in the show. Alright, um... I really don't want, uh... You know, Jamie singing to themselves. Would you look at the action and dialogue and see if there is a section which could be adapted rather than inserted? Can, that is... Can Jamie sing to the other characters? Conveying some of the meaning currently, um, being conveyed by the dialogue? If that works, we'll eventually take out the dialogue and have the lyric function in the same dramatic way. That make sense? Absolutely, totally understand it. And then, Alex, Jamie alone, "Tonight, my art's my battleground." Ready? Here we go. Absolutely, that makes sense. Let's adapt the dialogue into a song where Jamie directly addresses the other characters. Here's possible, good! Here's possible we're working on the key emotional moments into a song. Jamie to Alex, "Tonight, it's more than just a show, it's my heart on display and I'm feeling the blow. You are all here, tangled in this strife, but understand, this is my ultimate life." Jamie to everyone, capturing the tension and stakes. "Tonight, we paint a story bold, every shade of doubt, every color of gold. With chaos swirls and protest, this is my canvas and I'm ready for more, so stand with me or stand aside." Kinda like that. Stand with me and stand aside. Tonight, we paint the truth, nothing to hide. You bicker, you fight while the world's on fire. But this art is my dream, not your endless quagmire. You think of profits, politics, and fame, but to me, this is passion. Not just a name. Okay, I think that's true, but not at the very top. "Tonight, we paint the story bold with every shade, with the colors, with the stand aside. Tonight, we paint the truth, nothing to hide. Alex, you're torn between duty and my fight. Duty and my fight, but this is where I shine in the spotlight. Taylor, Sam, stop fighting for control." Look at that, AI has figured that out. "This art is my heart, it's my ultimate goal. Tonight, we paint a story bold with every shade, it's chaos swirls. Tonight, we stand aside, stand aside. Tonight, we paint the truth, nothing to hide. Outro, in the end, it's not the noise or the fame, it's the art that speaks, that fuels the flame. Tonight, we make our mark, let the world see in this gallery of life, it's all about me." Okay, so that intro, or this outro, possibly might work as this warm-up, but, um, you just say, you know, that, that could be... I don't know, I don't know, that, that's just not very interesting, is it? These lyrics are as generic as the dialogue! Um, let me see if I can point, um, AI to this and say, um... Something, something, something like this can, um... That song might take place in the middle of the show. But look at the beats. Which start the show. Or maybe the moment when Jamie is saying "This is amazing. Everyone is looking at my art." Maybe she has a verse, but then Taylor says, "This is awful, everyone's protesting. We have to cancel." Then the song is about weather. Uh, it's a good idea to go ahead with the exhibition. Try that. Got it! Here's a song that could fit right around the moment Jamie realizes the impact of their art, followed by Taylor's response by the protest. This will focus on the tension between celebrating Jamie's success and the chaos threatening the exhibition, exhibition. I like the idea of that. Hold on to that, let's see if you do that. "The brush of faith, fate. This is amazing, everyone's in view, my art's got them talking, and it's breaking through. Eyes wide with wonder, hearts full of fire. Tonight, my work's a beacon, a true high wire." Pre-chorus, which I hate. "Look at this moment, it's bigger than I dreamed, a canvas of chaos, or so it seems." Chorus. We're, Jamie, still Jamie. "We're dancing on the edge of the brush of fa-" We're dancing on a brush? We're dancing on the edge of the brush, are we? Oh, still don't quite follow that metaphor. Here's the brush, we're over here." "We're dancing on the edge of the brush of fate. Painting history with every stroke we make." "Mate, mate, I can't get through it." "So let the protest, let the world collide in the chaos, there's a beauty we can't hide." There's a beauty we can't hide. In the protesting, in the collision, in the chaos? "We're living in a masterpiece tonight, in the brush of fate, we'll find our light." Wow, that's metaphorically such a mixed mess. "Taylor, this is awful, Jamie, this is out of hand. The protesters are storming, it's a shifting sand, one, one sand. That, that, that sand is shifting." "We have to cancel, pull the plug on the scene before it's too late. Before we're caught in between." That actually, that, that's promising, it's... It's a great lyric, but it's not bad content. "It's awful, we have to pull the plug." "Jamie, no, we're dancing on the edge of the brush of fate, painting history with every stroke we make. Let them protest, let the world collide in the chaos, there's a beauty we can't hide. We're living in a masterpiece tonight." Okay, if, if Sam and Jamie sing that, then can Taylor protest back? "Jamie, every revolution starts with a spark. Every great story, art story leaves its mark. So let them shout, let the protesters cry, this is my moment, I won't say goodbye." Goodbye, who is asking Jamie to say goodbye? Final chorus, "We're dancing on the edge of the brush of fate, painting the, the brushing on a find a light." Outro, "In the brush of fate, where our futures align. Tonight, we create, we'll be just fine." This song encapsulates Jamie's initial exhilaration and resolve against the backdrop of Taylor's concerns, blending their conflicting perspectives into a dynamic and dramatic piece. Alright, so, yeah, that, that, this is a fight between Jamie and Taylor is good. I like where you're headed with this. Where you're headed with this fight between Taylor and, uh, Jamie. About whether to cancel the exhibition. Would you add Sam to that conflict? Saying, um... That the publicity is going to help Jamie's opening. And add Alex with his... I don't have time for this, for this. I gotta go. Uh, with, uh, lamenting that he's leaving, that they're leaving Jamie in the middle of a crisis. But Alex is Uber, but Alex, Alex has to go or they'll miss their flight. You know what, let me, let me just add, add Sam. So it becomes two against one. Maybe add some specifics about the protest. Palestine, limousines, chaos. As well as images, um, from Jamie's art. Jamie's art is probably violent, or at least provocative. Pro, pro, provocative. And has images of pain, both physical and mental. But the section you have for Taylor is pretty good. As is, don't lose it. We'll go back and pick up some, the, the rhyming issues and, and, and something like that. Let's see where, let's see, let's see what that does. Certainly, here's a revised with Sam added conflict, adding more specifics about Jamie's art. Brush of fate. Okay, I just don't, you know what? Sorry, I'm a once more... Well, I just hate that brush of fate thing, but... "This is amazing, in everyone's view, my art's got them talking, breaking through. Images of anguish and intense painting, that's worth a statement against the grain. Look at this moment, it's bigger than I dreamed, a canvas of chaos, or so it seems." "We're dancing on the edge of the brush of fate, painting history with every stroke we make. Let the protesters roar, let limbs be blocked. It's this chaos, my art has never been so rocked. We're living in the masterpiece tonight, in the brush of fate, we'll find our light." That's not bad, if that's the moment and, and into that, Taylor bursts. "This is awful, it's spiraling out of hand." "We're onto something, this is not work." Protester fierce, blocking the limousines' stand. "We have to cancel, pull the plug on the show before the chaos makes everything blow." No, we're dancing on the edge of rev- Adding Sam, right? Adding Sam? "Painting history with every stroke we make, the protesters roar, we're living in the masterpiece tonight. Taylor, you're missing the point of the scene. Protest is fueling the fire, it's what we mean, the chaos is part of the show's grand design. Publicity will make Jamie's work shine. Every, every, in a storm, that's the impact, what art's about. We're dancing on the edge of fate." Okay, alright, 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 good. Good, that's promising. Would you clean that up a little bit? Get rid of the brush of fate metaphor. Get rid of the brush of fate metaphor. Uh, use perfect rhymes, please. No near rhymes. Okay, I'm not quite sure what we're doing with Alex, but good, that's promising, would you clean that up? Brush of fate is removed and perfect rhymes throughout. I'll be the judge of that. "This is amazing, in everyone's view, my art's got them talking, breaking through with images of pain and raw, intense fire. Tonight, my work's a statement taking us higher. Look at this moment, it's grander than dreamed, then, it's grander than dreamed. A canvas of chaos, or so it seems." No, that's just so bad every time. I thought you said, that's not a perfect rhyme! With perfect rhymes throughout, dreamed and seems! "We're dancing on the edge of the night, creating history with every sight. Let the protesters roar, let the limbs be blocked. In the chaos, my art's never been so rocked. We're living in a masterpiece tonight, this is awful. It's spiraling fast, protesters are fierce, pull the plug, makes everything blow. Dancing on the edge of the night, creating history with every sight. Let protesters roar, let limbs be blocked. You're missing the point of the scene, the protest fuels the fire, it's what we mean. Chaos adds to the show's grand design, publicity will make Jamie's work shine. Every revolution starts with a spark, and art that's bold leaves its mark. Let the limbs be blocked, let the protesters scream. This is the impact, the heart of the dream. We're dancing on the edge of night, in the canvas of tonight. Where futures entwine, we make our mark boldly and fine." Alright, um, getting there. Hold off making any references to protesters until Taylor enters. That is, right, uh, opening verse in which Jamie is excited, nervous about the controversy of their art. Hopeful it's going to have an impact. An impact, and both Sam and, whoops! Sam and Alex bolster her, bolster them, bolster Alex. Assuring Jamie's art is powerful and provocative. Then Taylor enters. What is that, stressed and? Stressed and? The pre-chorus dreamed. That pre-chorus isn't a perfect rhyme. Dreamed and seen, don't rhyme. Getting there. Here's where I have to get into the canvas of tonight. What I like about this collaborator is, is, uh, they just don't complain. It's like, here's another draft, here's another draft, here's another draft. Alright, how are we doing? "This is amazing, all eyes are on me, my art's causing ripples as wild as can be. With images of pain, raw and intense tonight, my work's a statement, breaking all pretense." Intense, pretense, intense, pretense. Not a perfect rhyme. Pretense rhymes with say it with me? Schmeetence! Intense rhymes with inchments, but intense, pret- Okay, pre-chorus, "Look at this moment, it's grand and it's bright. A chance for my art to shine in the light." "We're dancing on the edge of night, creating history with every sight. Let the world take notice, let the message be clear, in the spotlight, my art will steer. We're living in a masterpiece tonight, in the canvas of this fight." I don't really like any of that. "Sam, Alex, you're here to lift my fears. You see the power in these shifting gears? The chaos is part of the grand design, the controversy makes the work shine. What happened to her doubt? They're supposed to say that. We're dancing on the edge of night, creating history with every sight. Let the world take notice, let the message be clear, in this spotlight, my art will steer. We're living in a masterpiece tonight." Then Taylor enters. "This is awful, Jamie, it's spiraling fast. Protester fierce, the chaos won't last, have to cancel." No, we're dancing on the edge of night. Okay, I don't, um, go back a draft. Go back a version. Let's, let's see if we can help get it closer to what I'm looking for. Help get it closer to what I'm looking... Closer to what I'm looking for. To what I want. Just want, don't wanna end with a proposition, you understand? Proposition, okay, um... Verse one, Tay- uh, Jamie is self-doubting their art because of its, um... Controversy. Contro- versi. And extreme images. Which they believe in, but are afraid the audience is going to reject. Find distasteful, distasteful, distaste, dis-tasteful. Verse two, Sam, Sam and Alex bolster Jamie. Verse two, Sam and Alex bolster Jamie. Then B section. Taylor enters with the news that they want to cancel with the news about cancellation. Cancelation. And file protesters. Then Sam thinks that will only help. Taylor digs in. And see if you can find squeeze in moment in which Alex says they don't have time to help Jamie through this crisis. You know what? Maybe I'll hold off on that book, on that moment. I'll see. They're going to miss their plane. All right, try that. Certainly. Here's a revised with the changes. The canvas of tonight. Jamie, this overwhelming. Am I crossing the line? My art's extreme. Is it truly divine? These images of pain so raw and so stark. What if the audience finds them too dark? Can I trust that my vision is truly right or will, or will it all crumble tonight in the light? We're dancing on the edge of this night. Jamie, starting, we're dancing on the edge of this night, creating waves with every sight. Will they see the truth in my intense display or turn away from the chaos and dismay? We're living in a masterpiece tonight in the canvas of this fight. It's not ready to go. You could, you could, you could feel there's a lyric in there that's wanting to come out. But that, am I crossing the lines? Is it truly divine pain? So you know, it, I'm really looking for. I know what I'm doing and I gotta rattle some cages, but will anybody listen if, if you rattle too hard? Jamie, your vision's bold. Don't doubt your art. These images provoke. They come from the heart. Sam's right. Controversy can spark the flame. Your work's powerful. Don't let fear tame. Don't let fear tame. Ouch, ouch. This is awful, Jamie. Yes, it is. This is awful, Jamie. It's spiraling fast. Protesters are fierce and they're blocking the pass. We have to cancel. This chaos is too much. Before it blows up, it's a volatile touch. Rhymes. I don't know what that means. We're dancing on the edge of night, creating waves with every sight. Let them protest. Let the drama unfold in this spotlight. The story's bold. We're living in a masterpiece tonight in the canvas of this fight. Sam. Taylor, missing the impact we need. You're missing the impact we need. You're, that's not what he, Sam means you're missing the point. It has impact. The chaos will drive the buzz at the speed. It will drive the speed? What do you, what do you, what does that mean, Taylor? But lives are at risk. This is not just a game. Jamie's art's at the core and we can't take the blame. I've got a plane to catch, but I'm here to fight. We don't have much time. This is your night. I'll stay and support you. No. The opposite. I gotta go, but let's act fast before this crisis becomes our last. Our last crisis. We're dancing on the edge of the night, creating waves with every sight. Let the protest. We're living in a masterpiece tonight in the canvas of this fight. I thought the draft two versions ago was, was more promising. But the version two drafts ago was more promising. Try again, please. Concentrate on creating an A A B A structure with an intro. Forget outro. Forget outro. Forget. Final pre-chorus. Do this. Intro. What's her name? What's their name? Jamie expresses confidence in the power of their controversial. Of the power of their their, their, their political noisy. Their opinionated work, their political image filled art, but is suddenly doubting whether an audience is going to accept it. And verse one. Sam expresses confidence in Alex. A Jamie. And their art. Verse two. Alex joins in, but also says they feel bad, bad leaving Jamie in the middle of a crisis. B section. Taylor didn't like that. Taylor rushes in saying there are protesters. Protesters and they need to cancel. Then Sam, Jamie says the protesting is a good thing. Publicity. And Sam, or Sam and Jamie gang up against Taylor. Kind of running out of patience here. How about you? Canvas of tonight. I'm on the edge. My art's on display. Its bold images are meant to sway. Is this what they want or will they turn away? I'm not sure if they'll see what I convey. Hey, but look, 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 look. Intro, verse one, verse two, B section. Verse one, Sam. Jamie, your art's a force. It's cutting through. Those images are powerful. They're meant to strue? They're meant to strue? Strue what? Controversy is your strength, don't you see? It's the fire that fuels your creativity. Sam is right, Jamie. Your vision is clear, but I hate to leave you in this stressful sphere. I got a flight to catch, but I want to stay to help you through the storm come what may. All right, I see the conflict there. That mission accomplished, even if it's a little sing songy. Taylor burst in. This is a disaster, Jamie. We're in deep. The protesters are fierce. They're not letting us keep. What? They're not letting us keep. Well, they're not letting us strue. They're not letting us keep. We need to cancel, pull the plug on this night before the chaos turns everything to fright. No, the protest is a gift. It's drawing the crowd. Publicity is power. It's speaking out loud. We're turning this crisis into our stage. In this turmoil, we're setting the gauge. Let the world take notice. Let the chaos ignite. We're living in a masterpiece tonight. Okay, there, that that's structurally really useful. This version sets up Jamie's initial doubts, includes Sam and Alex's supportive responses. Then as Taylor's urgent intervention by followed a strong defense from Sam and Jamie, the structure follows A A B A with an intro and chorus. Yes, it does. Although the chorus should actually be the same structure as the verse. Do you think I could get you to do that? Ooh, so much better. Ooh. So much better. Keep this structure, please. Can you make verse one and verse two the exact same structure? Keep, keep this exact same pattern as the chorus. Same number of lines. And maybe even repeat the phrase. Let the world take notice in the same spot. In verse one and verse two. Lastly, I don't know. Lastly, would you label that final chorus as verse three? Two other. Would you rewrite the line? Say couplet. Including strue. And rewrite the couplet. The couplet. Which uses strue and get rid of strue, placing and replace strue with something else. Replace strue with something else. Also, also replace, what was that horrible thing? Well, it's all horrible, isn't it? It was stressful sphere. Finally, in the intro. Is there a way to make, to include a specific image from Jamie's art? Something about pig's blood or, or revolution, rebel bushen or oppression or Palestine? Certainly. Here's the revised with the changes. I'm on the edge. My art's on display. It's bold. Thanks. I'm on the edge. My art's on display. Its bold images are meant to sway a canvas revolution. Canvas of revolution vivid and raw. Will they see the message or just find it flaw? Jamie, your art's a force. It's cutting through. Those images are potent. They're meant to renew. Controversy is your strength. Let it unfold. Let the world take notice. It's worth more than gold. Sam's right, Jamie. Your vision is clear, but I hate to leave you in this tense frontier. I've got a flight to catch, but I want to stay and help you through the storm come what may. I have a feeling. Oh, first three. This is disaster, Jamie. We're in deep. Protesters are fierce, but not letting us keep. We need to cancel, pull the plug on this night before the chaos turns everything to fright. Protest is a gift. It's drawing the crowd. Publicity. Right idea, right idea. But use the length. Length. And structure of the chorus of the previous draft, the chorus of the previous draft. And make the, make verse one and two longer. A reminder to add let the world take notice in all three verses. In the same spot in all three verses. Try again. That in mind? Certainly. Here's the revised version with the org verses matching the length and structure of the chorus, including the repeated phrase. I'm on the edge. My art's on display. Its bold images may dissuade a canvas of revolution stark and intense. Will they see the message? Find it dense? Jamie, art's a force. It's cutting through. Those images are potent. They're meant to renew. A splash of red and a call to rise. Let the world take notice. See through the disguise. Controversy is your strength. Let it unfold. Your vision is fierce, worth more than gold. Sam's right. Your vision's so clear. Hate to leave you in this stressful frontier. I just don't like that. The turmoil's a storm, but we can't delay. I've got a flight to catch, but I'll stay. Let the world take notice as chaos ensues. In this battle of art, we have nothing to lose. You see, it's not in the same spot. But, but close. This disaster, Jamie, it's getting severe. The protesters are fierce. They're blocking the rear. We need to cancel for the plug on this night before the chaos turns everything to fright. No protest is a gift. It's drawing the crowd. Publicity is a power. It's speaking out loud. Let the world take notice. Let the world take notice. Oh, unfold, untold. All right. Okay, one, one last pass. And then I'll go with it. It's still not very good, but it's mediocre and I think it hit the bar. The put, let the world take notice in one, two. one, two, three, four, five. At the beginning of the fifth line of each verse. Nowhere else. Nowhere else. Disguise, uh, display intense, too dense. Can you add more images to Jamie's opening? Like you're trying to do do with Sam. Is it something of red? What is it? Splash of red. Of red and call to rise. And Alex in Alex's verse. Can you make the content be about? I'm sorry, I have to go. I'm leaving you in the middle of chaos. I hate that. But you're gonna be great. The world is about to notice you. Here's the final version. I think I'm gonna go with this. Let's see. I'm on edge. My arts on display. Its bold images are meant to sway a canvas of red, revolution and strife. Will they see through it or just see it as a knife? Ruff. Jamie, art's a force. It's cutting through. Those images are potent. They're meant to renew. A splash of red and a call to rise. Let the world take notice beyond their eyes. Controversy is your strength. Let it unfold. Your vision is fierce, worth more than gold. Sam's right, Jamie. Your vision so clear. Hate to leave you in this stormy frontier. Okay, I just can't stand that stormy frontier. Sorry to go leaving you midst the fight, but you're going to shine. The world's about to take flight. Let the world take notice as chaos brews. I'll miss the moment, but I'll know you'll enthuse. This disaster, protesters blocking the rear. Hasn't, protest is a gift. It's drawing their publicity is power. It's speaking out loud. Let the world take notice. Couldn't I tell you? Don't put it there. Replace stormy frontier with something else. And Taylor's first words be replace they're blocking the rear rear with something which implies they're getting out out of control. Things are about to be dangerous. Is that enough? Can I live with that? And try a rewrite of just see it as a knife. Something along the lines of they're going to be of something implying fear that the audience is going to be repelled or angered by Jamie's art. Sure, it'd be easier just to rewrite this lyric, wouldn't it? I am so, I am so supporting my collaborator here. Come on, collaborator, do better. The canvas of tonight. I'm on the edge. My arts on display. Its bold images are meant to sway. Canvas of red, revolution and pain. Will they see my vision or just turn away into stain? So bland, but Jamie, your art's a force. It's cutting through. Those images are potent. They're meant to renew. A splash of red and a call to rise. Let the world take notice beyond their eyes. Controversy is your strength. Let it unfold. Your vision is fierce, worth more than gold. Sam's right, Jamie. Your vision so clear. But I hate to leave you in this fraught atmosphere. I'm going, I'm sorry to go, leaving you midst the fight. Boy, that's an easy lyric to sing. I'm sorry to go, leaving you midst the fight. But you're gonna shine. The world's about to take flight. Your world's about to take flight, maybe cause the world's in chaos. Let the world take notice. Okay, let's get rid of the world, world there. As chaos brews, I'll miss the moment, but I know you'll enthuse. Oh, okay, I'm gonna just rewrite that. This is a disaster, Jamie. It's getting severe. The protesters are raging. Things are about to veer. We need to cancel, pull the plug on this night before the chaos turns everything to fright. Ugh. There was a better version of that earlier. Let me see if I can grab that. No, the protest is a gift. It's drawing the crowd. Publicity is power. It's speaking out loud. Let the world take notice. Let the chaos ignite. We're turning this crisis into our fight. Let the world take notice. Let the drama unfold. We're living in a masterpiece, bold and untold. This vision incorporates the changes to address your concerns. Okay. How long was that? I don't know. You have a better sense of it. That was over an hour. Better, mediocre at best. A couple lines in there are, are less than mediocre. A couple are just intolerable. So can AI write mediocre lyrics? Oh, boy. Jury's out. Let, let's, uh, let's find a different section and, um, before I conclude, I just give up. But I, I, I will, god, close enough for mediocre, I'm gonna call it. I'm gonna, uh, massage a couple of those things that just make me nauseous. Um, and then, um, see if I can take those lyrics and feed them into music. But let me, let me, let me see if I can find, um, let me do another session or two and see if I can uh, musicalize the rest of this, despite of the fact that this is, this is hard and not a lot of fun. I enjoy mocking it, but, um, you know, this, this show isn't terribly interesting and the lyrics are not terribly interesting. Yay.